Hello, I'm Richard Hayes and I'm chairing this session on Beyond GDP in Practice. I joined the Office for National Statistics in 2015 as Deputy Chief Economist, and this was rather akin at the time to becoming a high priest of a dying religion. The Stiglitz-Senham-Futuji Report had been published in 2009 and outlined in excruciating detail why we needed to move beyond GDP, and the world had moved quickly to develop alternative metrics, particularly dashboards of indicators. Standing back from the COVID pandemic, which as an event has impacted the economy, the environment and human society simultaneously, what is noticeable is the lack of traction of these dashboard-type indicators. The UN Sustainable Development Goals, for example, contains over 130 indicators covering the economy, human health, the natural world and everything in between. But I cannot think of a senior politician who has justified a single decision during the crisis by referencing the SDGs. This can be easily understood. If 65 SDGs are going up and 65 are going down, is the country better off, worse off or indifferent? GDP, for all of its recognised weaknesses, is definitive in this sense and sends a clear signal. It is going up, which is good; it is going down, which is bad; or it is remaining the same. It is a poor conceptual match for welfare or wellbeing in their wider sense, but in terms of policy setting, it is tractable and remains, in many senses, the only game in town. This is why the UN Network of Economic Statisticians endorsed by the UN Statistical Commission have recommended advancing research into a single objective measure of welfare, a complement to GDP, which builds upon existing methods and data to provide alternatives which will be a better conceptual match for the things we're trying to understand. Economics and our profession offers a key philosophical contribution to this debate for the use of a common numerar - money - to provide an objective means to bring together varied data on diverse aspects of life. And our papers today address various aspects of this challenge, building on work at the Office for National Statistics and the Economic Statistics Centre of Excellence. Andrew Aitken and Martin Wille's paper questions how we should consider the change in the value of money through time to better reflect the impact of inequality. Kiana Taylor will discuss new metrics developed by the ONS from existing data to create a wider single index measure to complement GDP and including some experimental results. Rob Dunn will discuss how to build human capital into such a landscape and how to present it alongside GDP and new indicators. And Josh Martin and John Franklin will reflect on how key concepts like productivity can also be applied to non-traditional sectors such as non-profit sector. Rukha Huxtra will be our discussant, and I hope you will find this session informative, not least on the work ONS is doing to reach beyond the current international focus on dashboards towards data, which can be more usable in policy terms and provide a real alternative to go beyond GDP. Andrew, I'm going to ask you to take the floor. Where's your presentation? Please comment.
Thanks, Richard. So, this is work undertaken by me while I was working at NESA and my colleague Martin Wille. So, what I'm about to present doesn't represent the views of the ONS, ISCO, NESA or the OECD. So, this paper is called Measuring National Income Growth Democratically: Methods and Estimates for the UK. So, as Richard mentioned, the Sen-Stiglitz-Futuji Commission. So, that commission came up with, as Richard mentioned, a whole broad range of different suggestions as to what we could do to better measure wellbeing. So, the purpose of this paper is to extend some earlier work that Martin and I did, creating a measure of democratic growth. So, the idea of democratic growth is that we give equal treatment to every individual or every household in the population, giving them equal weight as their - as a share of the population rather than as their share of income. So, it's different from the usual arithmetic mean, in other words, which automatically gives more weight to higher-income people or higher-income households. So, I think it's widely recognised that there's a disconnect between movements in aggregate output or income and the distribution of income that individuals see. On the other hand, GDP or GDP per capita does have a very long history, and as Richard just said, it remains very dominant, and it does have an advantage over, for example, the dashboard approach, where you might have many measures which undoubtedly give a better indication of different dimensions of people's wellbeing. But as Richard said, it can be hard to interpret if you have a whole different - a wide range of different measures and some are going up, some are going down. So, GDP does have an advantage. One of its advantages is its simplicity of a single number. So, what we propose to do, what we do in this paper, is to allocate all income from the UK national accounts to a sample of individual households. And so, we create a single number, but it's a democratic national income. So, what do we do? So, we, as I said, we allocate all of the national income and the national accounts to individual households, and the sample of individual households that we allocate this income to is in the Living Costs and Food Survey, the LCF or LCFS, which is an ONS survey of households, around about 5,000 households per year. So, this table, I mean, I'm not going to go, I'm going to show you three tables, I'm not going to go through these line by line, but there's some issues involved in actually allocating all of the national income and the national accounts to households. So, one of the issues we face is that there's under-recording of some elements in the national accounts. So, if you look at the very top line here, we see wages and salaries, the figure for the national accounts, the figure that we see in the LCFS, and these are very close. So, you know, the LCFS is pretty good at recording people's wages and salaries. If you look about halfway down the table, you'll see interest receipts and dividend receipts, you'll see the figure from the national accounts, and then you'll see the figure of around 6,000 or 7,000 million from the LCFS. So, this just reflects the fact that the LCFS doesn't capture, and household surveys generally don't capture particularly well, things like interest receipts and dividend receipts. So, we have to do some imputation, and there's a number of ways. So, quite a bit, quite a large part of this paper is about the methods that we use to do this imputation. So, we use a particular modelling approach, which I'll talk about a little bit in a moment. And so, the last column here, modelling, simply refers to scaling. So, for example, wages and salaries, we simply scale that up. The LCFS figure, we scale that up so that it equals the national accounts, whereas some of the other things, such as interest receipts and dividend receipts, we model these, and also pension rights, we have to model. So, I mean, the bottom of this table gives us net primary income, and then the top of this table, we're starting with net primary income, and then we're making some other adjustments. So, for example, we're giving people social benefits, both in cash and other social benefits in kind, for example, education and health services, for example. And then we also have to take off some household contributions, there's obviously taxes and employer contributions, social contributions. So, at the end of all of this, we end up with household net disposable income. And then finally, there's some other adjustments that need to be made. For example, we need to take into account the extent of government budget or the government budget surplus or deficit. So, that's the consumption of government, and if the government is running a deficit, then net saving here, which is negative. So, at the end of all of this, we end up with net national disposable income from the national accounts. So, the way we do the imputation for the interest and dividends, I mean, a simple way to do it would simply be to scale up interest and dividends, but we see in the LCFS a large proportion of zeros. So, if we were to just scale this up, then all of those zeros that we see in the survey, household survey, would still remain as zeros. So, that's problematic if you're interested in looking at the distribution. So, we adopt a more flexible approach, which is structured around an audit-prudent model. We also estimate some imputation models for household rent, which I'm not really, which I'm not going to talk about. We follow the approach that the ONS also uses for doing this. So, what we have to do is we use SBI, the Survey for Personal Income, which is a sample of tax, actual tax records from HMRC to impute our interest and dividend income, and then we use the Wealth and Assets Survey for imputing pension receipts. So, because we're trying to match, we're trying to take data from the household survey and impute that. So, we're trying to take data from one survey, the SBI or the Wealth and Assets Survey, and impute that in another survey, the Living Costs and Food Survey. The co-variants have to be available in both sources, in both the source and in the LCFS. But there is necessarily going to be a stochastic element involved to take into effect, take into account that, you know, there is a, there is, we can't perfectly match the data from the source into the LCFS. So, there has to be a random component. So, when I show you the results of this at the end, we end up with an average, but it's an average of multiple simulations. So, this just, I'm just going to show you a few graphs which show you the results of our imputation. So, the dark bars here show you the actual data, the actual distribution of pension rights, and then the light coloured bars show you the results after we impute the pension rights in the Wealth and Assets Survey. So, I mean, the audit-prudent model is a very flexible way of doing this, and the same thing, we can do the same thing for interest income and also dividend income. So, these are just showing you what happens if we do the imputation in the SBI or in the Wealth and Assets Survey. So, if we use the coefficients that we estimate and then to do, and use those to do the imputation in the source, but obviously, we're taking these coefficients and then we're doing the imputation in the Living Costs and Food Survey. So, as I said, we're going to do some simulations because of the stochastic element. The other thing we do, which I'll just mention, is that we also take into account the covariances between these different receipts. So, we have, we look at up to two adults in each household, we have the interest and dividend receipts, we also have the pension receipts, we have rent imputed rent. And so, we have to take into account the correlation between these different receipts. If we didn't take into account the correlations between these, and perhaps the interest and dividends were highly correlated, or there's high correlations between two people and a household, then we would tend to understate the extent of the correlation if we weren't taking into account the correlations. So, we also take that into account. And the other thing we do beyond the audit-prudent model is -
Five minutes.
Thanks, Richard. Beyond the audit-prudent model that I mentioned is to use a Pareto distribution at the very top of the income distribution, to take into account the very top. So, this is what we end up with, this is growth rates of real income, real national household, real national income per household. We're using data from 2007 up until 2017. So, the solid line shows the plutocratic measure, and the dotted line shows the democratic measure, which is treating each household equally. So, I mean, the first thing to notice is that they're actually quite similar. So, this is something that we're a little bit puzzled about. So, maybe people have some comments on this. So, this graph here shows you the results for where we were just looking at primary income. This is from our paper in Economica from 2020. This is based on ETB data from DWP, earnings, taxes and benefits data. So, this is about a survey of about 20,000 households rather than 5,000. And, you know, you do see the overall average, you know, they do see a material difference between the growth and the real democratic and real plutocratic income, and you see some quite significant differences in particular years between the democratic and plutocratic. But we don't really seem to be seeing that at the moment when we look at national income. So, I will skip to Gini coefficients. So, as far as we know, no one's ever done Gini coefficients for national disposable income before. So, on the left-hand side here, we have the Gini coefficient for primary income. So, this is similar to the ONS Gini coefficient. We do have some graphs showing that it's fairly similar to what the ONS has, the overall pattern, although this is, the Gini coefficients are slightly higher. So, the primary income here is also including interest and dividend receipts. And then the middle graph, household income, we're taking into account the tax and benefit system essentially, and then national disposable income, we're taking into account INPISH, non-profit institutions serving household, and also government operating surplus, for example. So, and then the other thing that we can do is to look at some other measures of income inequality. So, for example, we could look at the 90/10 ratio, which is the graph on the left-hand side, and the graph on the right-hand side shows the top 10% income share. So, the other, the other thing that, I mean, that we get from all of these is that overall there seems to be a decline in inequality over this period, which seems quite consistent across the Gini coefficients and the 90/10 and the top 10% income share. So, to conclude, I mean, basically, we show a practical means of producing welfare indicator on a regular basis. So, it's a democratic, it's a measure of democratic national income, where we're allocating all of the income that appears in the national accounts to individual households. And, you know, I think this is, this is something, I mean, we've argued previously that this is something that can be fairly easily explained to people as being the average of each household's income growth rate, and the fact that it's treating each household equally in terms of their weighting in the, in the, in the population. And at the moment, you know, our results seem to be showing that declining inequality over time. The other, the other conclusion is that there doesn't seem to be very much difference between the democratic and the plutocratic. So, I'll stop there. Thank you very much. Look forward to any comments and questions.
Thank you, Andrew. We're going to take questions collectively at the end, so to keep us moving, I'm going to pass this straight to Kiana to begin their presentation. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. You should be able to see my slides. Richard, are you happy just to confirm that?
Yes, in full screen mode.
Perfect. Right here. So, hello, I'm Kiana Taylor from ONS, and I'm here to present GDP and Welfare: Empirical Estimates of a Spectrum of Opportunity. So, just a little bit of background to start, this has been an ongoing project that we're about five years into now. And, God goodness, what a, what a five years to be doing research into estimates of welfare over. We initially presented ideas for this work in the 2017 ESCO Conference, and then since, developed two papers. The first in 2019 was a theory paper, but the most recent paper that I'm presenting results from today is from 2021. But one thing just to get started with, just to be nice and clear, although these papers have been written by, written by staff at ONS, the views that I'll express here are not necessarily those of the ONS. And I'm going to start with a pretty broad question and try and keep things open and start this in an open-minded fashion. So, when we're talking about welfare, quite often we're thinking about GDP. We're thinking about what's wrong with GDP and how do we go beyond GDP? And I want to tackle this from both sides, and let's think about both what's wrong with GDP, but also what's right with GDP. And actually, let's start with what's right with GDP. Because there's a big question looming that Richard put in his introduction, that we've been having a conversation for years, if not decades, about welfare and the need to go beyond GDP when measuring economic welfare, and yet GDP remains as a measure that's quite often used in place of welfare. So, actually, I think quite a good place to start is what is GDP doing right? And I've got some of the sort of responses you might get to that question on the screen. So, first off, GDP is always available. GDP is routinely produced, and people know it's a quality product. And GDP has also been produced for years. If you want to do analysis going back historically, GDP is incredibly good. Different countries produce GDPs, and there's international standards governing that. And GDP itself is a pretty good substitute for welfare. There's quite a lot of criticisms of it, obviously, but as just picking any economic measure goes, GDP does have quite a few things going for it. And so, just to summarise some of the broad points, especially around some of those quality issues. So, a first thing to point out is that GDP is consistent across quite a lot of different areas in the economy. It has consistent rules governing of them, it has integrated stocks and flows, quadruple accounting, all things like that. It's very well defined, a lot of effort goes into defining some of these concepts, and there's international agreement about those, about those concepts, and they're accompanied by consistent activity and asset boundaries. And talking about those boundaries, they're comprehensive, so all of that economic activity is governed by those same rules, and those rules carry through both to an income approach, production approach, and expenditure approach. The numbers are timely, maybe in the context of COVID, we might not think of quarterly statistics still as being timely or even monthly statistics, but actually compared to other measures of economic welfare, they are quite timely and also granular. So, the data can be decomposed into different components, like different industries and different sectors. So, a really good place to start for any measure of economic welfare is building upon some of those core things that are going right with GDP. But I'm going to touch briefly as well on what's going wrong. This might be rather familiar ground to people coming to a talk about welfare or economic wellbeing. So, a key one is that GDP doesn't capture some of the economic flows outside the market. Of course, important to bear in mind, it does capture some flows, such as my work as a public servant. GDP specifically doesn't capture the depreciation of assets, although some depreciation of assets is covered within the national accounts from which GDP is drawn. GDP doesn't grapple with some emerging and historic complicated ownership structures, when we think, for example, about the atmosphere or more recently about data. And then finally, just for a snippet of some of these, it doesn't capture assets outside of the productive sector, such as human and natural capital, which will be coming to later in these sessions. So, how do we build on from there? And before getting into actually our specifics, I want to talk about some of the building blocks that are already there and already usable for going beyond GDP. And one of them that often gets overlooked is the national accounts itself that GDP is drawn from. GDP isn't, although it's often treated as this way, the end product of the national accounts, it's just one measure. And there are many others within the national accounts that can be used for a wellbeing perspective, such as household income, net disposable products, or as we'll talk about a bit about later, net national disposable income. So, there's work already within the realm of national accounts that can be used. But alongside national accounts, there are several satellite accounts that countries have been developing for a while now, which are quite useful to build on from the core national accounts, and those include the household satellite accounts, which include household non-market production of services. So, if you're thinking about your domestic labour, that's where this comes in, as well as the environmental satellite accounts. So, we're going to delve a bit more into those now, and we're going to talk about delivering a welfare measure, building on some of those principles. So, what I want to present really is a way of thinking about how we approach the thinking about choosing a measure of economic welfare. And I want to put forward the prospect of thinking about it like a spectrum. Where on one side of the spectrum, we're heavily focused on a very traditional, very specific, market-oriented concept of what the economy is, and then we build out from there into a broader measure of what the economy could be conceived as. And when thinking about this spectrum, I want to try and put forward as well that all points on this spectrum are valid for different purposes, and it's just thinking about what purposes people want to use the measure for that helps govern which will be the best measure for them. So, actually, let's start not quite on the left-hand side, but pretty far, and let's talk about GDP that we've already talked about a little bit. And one thing to point out is that on this spectrum, this is not an extreme. This lies at a certain point in the spectrum. If we move just to the left of it, we have purely market sector GVA, and the GDP already goes some way to including things beyond the market sector. So, why would you want to use market sector? Well, if you want very well-defined, easier to collect data, you might look specifically at the market sector. For example, people who are interested in inflationary pressures might want to focus on the parts of the economy where market forces are the biggest governor of prices. And so, that might be just the market sector itself, a perfectly valid measure of what the economy is. You might want to move further to GDP, because there you've got some expanded inclusion of public sector services, for example. But still, you're working with frameworks that are well internationally defined, with long back series, all that we've talked about so far. The work that we've been doing in spectrum lives in these next two sectors, the expanded GDP and welfare minus. So, with an expanded GDP, what we're doing is for the UK, but you could do this for several countries, we're taking the concept of GDP and we're building on it in a few ways. The first way is actually, within the current international rules, there are still areas in which GDP for the UK, for example, can be improved. We can take the current guidelines that we have for how national accounts are run and try and pick the best methodologies available. We could then have a look at some of the things that have been considered, for example, for the update to the system of national accounts, and think about what including those would look like. And then we can include things which really aren't in consideration for inclusion in GDP yet, but are still consistent with some of the, some of the guidelines around GDP, and that's where your things like household income come in. But then moving beyond expanded GDP, we have welfare minus, so that's taking account of the depreciation of assets. Moving even further beyond that, the talk that was given just now, we think that that's some really great work and really, a really useful concept of thinking about democratic measurement. You could take the work that we've been doing and think about that within a democratic framework, and there develop democratic net national disposable income. But then we also do see that beyond that, there is still a need then for moving to pluralistic dashboards, that if your, your way of thinking about the economy, your way of thinking about wellbeing is no longer aggregatable, then you're all going to have to move towards these pluralistic dashboards. And which point you lie on this certain spectrum will depend on your needs, how, how much you want to weigh the consistency of measures over time, the international agreement, et cetera, versus having a more expanded definition of welfare. So, we've been doing some work on this so far and creating some empirical measures as far as we can, and this like, it's a bit of an overview of where we are, those sort of areas on the left-hand side, we've got six of them. And so far, to build on GDP, we've included quality-adjusted public services, we've included an expanded suite of intangible assets, we've included unpaid household services, and we've included some natural capital flows of benefits. But some areas that we want to include but haven't got around to yet are human capital investment and depreciation, as well as free digital products. So, for the sake of time, I'm going to skip ahead a bit and get to the point that, thank you very much, that people are going to be most interested in patents, and that's the result. So, like GDP, we've calculated these data both in current price terms as well as chain volume measures. So, this chart on the right-hand side here shows current price measures. And what we've done is that we've broken down the transition from market sector GVA on the left-hand side, right over to our measure of net inclusive income, that's the Uh. Right over to our uh measure of net inclusive income. That's the um. Uh. That 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 is our measure of uh economic welfare, if you like. So market GBA to get to GDP, you've got your non-market GBA included in there, as well as an adjustment to taxes, minus subsidies. But then to move from GDP to gross inclusive income. Uh. We've got adjustments for that expanded suite of intangible investment. With account of the quality adjusted public services, but you'll notice that they have no effect on the current price statistics. And that's because these quality adjustments just come through from the price side. So you only see those in the chain volume estimates that I'll show soon. The big adjustment here is coming from household production, which we'll talk a bit about soon. Um. We've got this adjustment in here as well for the the benefit that comes from sub-carbon sequestration from natural capital services. So this gives us a gross measure of income. But then we also have our adjustments to move from that gross measure to a net measure. And that includes a typical capital depreciation from national accounts. It includes capital appreciation from that expanded suite of intangible investment. Um. It also includes household depreciate uh the depreciation of household capitals. From household durables used in household production. Um. And then finally, it includes an estimate for climate degradation as well. So perhaps what's most interesting though is have a look at the chain volume measures. So what I've got here on the right-hand side are indexes indexed to the 2005. We've got GDP in the orange and you can see that follows quite closely market GVA over the long term uh in the yellow. Um. Uh. And then the uh statistic from the the national accounts, the blue book, net national disposable income. So that's consistent with the rules governing GVA uh and GDP. Um. But if you look at the difference between that blue line, which comes from the national counts. Uh. And this uh net inclusive income measure that we've created, this grey line. You'll see that actually, over the past 10 years, our measure of economic welfare has performed much more strongly than those uh national accounts estimates. Um. Uh. Would indicate. And one of the good things about the framework we've developed here is we can actually break that down to see where that's coming from. So this chart here takes that grey line from the fine last chart. And it looks at the contributions to growth and net inclusive income. Uh. And it can break it down, starting from the the light blue bars there that are pretty big, that market GVA. Uh. And builds out from there. Uh. And there are an awful lot of stories going on in this data that we're exploring the paper. But for example, one I want to draw. And probably the biggest one that I want to draw your attention to is if you have a look at the market GVA data and you have a look around 2008, 2009, and you see the fall in the data there. Um. If you look around the same time, you'll see the expansion of those green bars and those are household production. So perhaps, uh as you'd think intuitively during and following the financial crisis, you have this. Uh. Decrease in market production uh that's accompanied by an increase in household production. Um. That perhaps is due to household substituting away from. Um. Market consumption into household production. So things like if people's hours are cut, if their pay is cut. They might stop going out to eat at a restaurant, they might start cooking at home. But very interestingly, for that household production, when market GVA starts growing again. Household production does not. It's sort of increased with a step change around the time of the financial crisis. Um. And one of the immediate things that jumps out from this that we can't wait to explore in the future. Is what we would see in terms of this market versus household production relationship around the time of COVID. And whether we would see a similar trade-off. So that's just one of many stories going on in the data. But but I, in the remaining time I have, just want to talk about the sort of conclusions that we have from this work. So first off. Is this new measurement perfect? Absolutely not. The whole point of this work really is just to build gradually and evolutionarily. Uh. On top of GDP and on top of national accounts, but where work that needs to go on particularly our human capital. So I'm excited to hear about uh a bit in a few minutes. Um. And also, we want to highlight that we don't, we aren't putting forward these measures to replace GDP. The whole point here is that there's very much still a place to GDP. Uh. And this sort of framework is meant to show what complements we can develop for GDP. Terms and next steps, we're very keen to get people's feedback on what they're most interested in. Uh. We want to incorporate some of the work that's going to be heard about later, about human capital. Uh. And we also want to include within a future publication, the way in which this framework is very consistent with a lot of what's been talked about inclusive wealth. And can be built upon to create measures of inclusive wealth as well, as well as developing a regular annual publication. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. And so we will, in the interest of time, keep moving forward. Um. And we'll pass on to Rob Dunn. Rob, over to you. There you go. I can see them this time. You can just put those on full screen.
Yeah, I'm gonna try again.
Okay, there we go. Perfect.
Right, I start from the top. Okay, I'm Robert Dunn and I work for the Office of National Statistics. Uh. This presentation is based on a forthcoming discussion paper with ESCO. And it looks to include human capital assets within the sequence of economic accounts and therefore. Uh. To be taken into consideration in the compilation of economic aggregates of interest, such as gross value added and gross saving and net worth. So in essence, what we're doing here is expanding the national accounts production and asset boundary to include human capital assets. Uh. This presentation intends to cover in the next 15 minutes or so the following. Uh. Elements. So some some background, um some conceptual points, conceptual points that need to be solved. Um. A question over a paradigm shift between what we're talking about here is whether it's a labour input versus a human capital asset input into a production process. Uh. Some some principles of uh what a satellite account does. As the current experimental results we've got so far. And then some conclusions. On the experimental results, these are preliminary results. Uh. They're not final and they need some further research to improve and refine them. But this is how far we got so far. So again, this is the first step on a a long journey. So the background. Uh. ONS has produced human capital stock estimates for over a decade now with various democratic breakdowns and improvements over time. Um. Uh. The in 2016, UN ECE produced a guide on measuring human capital. We set out some guidance on producing. Um. Human capital estimates and on um the basis of a human capital. Human capital satellite account. It didn't give final answers uh or address all the possible issues. But it does form the foundation of the work here. Uh. Similarly, the system of national accounts, which we're coming on version 2008. And within the revisions discussions which are happening now. They've been discussing um education and training satellite accounts and a human capital satellite account. And uh talking about the definitions and um methods involved with those. And then we have the Beyond GDP work stream, which this forms part of, and we're trying to look beyond the current definition of GDP. And to improve uh making it a better wellbeing estimate. And then, as I said, forthcoming paper, uh measuring human capital in the UK economic accounts and experimental satellite account. This is the first presentation for the UK of a human capital satellite account. And it will be coming out hopefully in May. Right. So conceptual points we need to solve. So we have a human cap, we need first off a human capital definition. So we're using the one given in Fender 2012. So human capital is seen as the knowledge, skills, competencies and other attributes embodied in individuals or groups of individuals. Acquired during their life and used to produce goods, services or ideas in market market circumstances. So again, we're focusing on the economic benefits of human capital. Uh. As mentioned, the ONS produces stock estimate, so that they're, it's the estimate that we should go into the balance sheet. We're interested in the satellite account more about the movement between two balance sheet positions. And 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 try to explain how that evolution of the S stock estimate occurs. So to do that, we need the following elements. So we need to identify transactions, so gross investment and depreciation. We need to identify and strip out um evaluations, so nominal price effects. And we also need to take out um other volume changes. Changes which are neither transactions or price effects. So these within human capital realm are things like immigration and immigration. Which aren't transactions, it's just a movement of an individual with embodied human capital. Uh into or out of the domestic economy. Uh. So one of the big questions we need to answer is where is human capital produced? Because it's embodied in people, it's naturally to see human capital assets being produced in the household sector. So the foundational point of the construction of the satellite count is that human capital assets are produced in the household sector. And what are the inputs to the to the human capital asset production function? Again, to maintain connections to the core accounts, we see the inputs as education, state and private funded and purchase training. Which leaves some questions about what about work experience? Um. Persons' um wages and salaries are dependent on how much work experience they have. And what type and type and quality of that work experience. But at the moment, we haven't devised an estimate for what uh the input for that work experience would be. So the work experience element forms part of the value-added um of the human capital asset. A similarly in-house training, um the cost of that would be within the intermediate consumption of businesses. But we haven't isolated those costs to form um in-house training output number. But it is something we've got for future research. And it's perfectly possible because we can um can um estimate it in the same way we do for all in-house um production. Using um uh some of costs approach. Uh. Because we've got um human capital assets being produced in the household sector. We need to root some of the transactions to the household sector. Particularly the state-funded education, first off, needs to be reclassified to market output. So um for central government and local government sectors. This is because currently the state-funded education is seen as non-market output. And that means it can be only consumed by the sector that produces it. So by this reclassification, it makes that output available for the household sector to consume as an intermediate good or service. Uh. A similarly purchased training is is counted as part of intermediate consumption and we need to create an output. Um. Which mirrors those those costs to make it available for the house, for the household sector to consume as an input. And because this is um rerouting um um of transactions through the the accounts. And no physical exchange of money takes place, we have to incorporate a current transfer to the household sector. From those sectors which are providing the intermediate human capital asset inputs. This then doesn't distort net lending borrowing positions. Right. And then we have the question of how to capture human capital investment from the start of education. Recording of human capital asset production as output for own consumption in the household sector. Allows us to be then immediately, as soon as it's formed, record that as GFCS. This is country to if it was seen as just normal market output. Then the asset would have to be complete before it could be recorded as GFCS. So it's a way of. Slotting human capital into the sequence of accounts and allowing an incremental buildup of the asset. And recording it as GFCS as it builds up. Now we move on to the big conceptual point. Are we dealing now in the modern world with a labor? Um. With the human capital asset input in contrary to a labour input? Or is this mixture of the two? This is important because we need to return to human capital asset to be recorded as net operating surplus. And we also need to avoid double counting the return to human capital asset between compensation of employees, I wages and salaries. And the net operating surplus return for the asset. So within modern economies, is it a labour input, which which would have a return shown as a theory, uh compensation of employees or wages and salaries? Or as a human capital input? Which is the return shown in the operating surplus in the production function. And both of of these are based upon um labour costs to evaluate the return to the input. Um. In the work we were going to be showing, we have taken the extreme position of rooting everything in as a return to human capital. So. The this way, so we uh compensation employees drops to zero in our satellite account. Because everything is then treated in a slightly different manner, which we'll go on to explain now. The human capital assets are, as we've said, are seen to be economically owned by households. Yet the majority of the time are used by other institutional sectors to produce goods and services. So we now need. To create an output of the household sector. Which then allows the rerouting to net operating surplus for the return to the capital. Uh. So how to represent this on a transactional basis? So the current solve is to parallel this with the traditional asset and the concept of an operating lease. In essence, households lease their human capital to employers in return for a rental payment. So so being seen seen to be paid a compensation of employees for their labour input. They're now producing and receiving a rental payment. So this is it is the mechanism whereby the return to the human capital asset. Is rooted to um the operating surplus or profit for the return to capital. As with all other physical uh and intangible assets.
Five minutes, Rob.
Okay. So briefly, principles of the satellite account. Um. It expands the analytical capacity of the core national accounts, remains links to the existing national accounts. And it adds information about a particular aspect of the economy or a rearrangement of information differently across sectors. And that's just an example. So on to the the current experimental results. The current uh results draw data from the published UK economic accounts, so remaining a link to the core national accounts. And the human capital estimates. The human capital estimates uh produced by the ONS are based on the lifetime incomes method. And covers um the age range from 16 to 65. So it's not conceptually. As exact as we would like it for the satellite account, but it's a good basis to to demonstrate the impacts. Uh. So uh these are presented to meet the needs of the human capital satellite account. Uh. There are, as mentioned, some conceptual weaknesses in the current data which future research will look to address. And again, stress, this is the first UK presentation of a human capital satellite account. And it illustrates the magnitude of the impacts human capital assets could have on the economic accounts. So first table is um results uh for the reference year 2018. For a selection of macroeconomic aggregates. So for the first line, gross value added. We are adding uh from the, including human capital assets, some £406 billion uh to GVA. Which is uh 21% of the current variable. Uh. Right through to net worth, where we get the full value of the asset, which is um at £20.8 trillion. Pounds. Which is uh so by including human capital assets, we basically treble the net worth of the UK. And a comparison of um gross value, nominal gross value added growth, we see by the blue line is the existing. Um. Gross value added growth line. And then the red is the gross value added, including human capital assets. The main things to take away from this is that in the financial crisis recession. If we had included human capital assets, we would have gone into recession earlier and deeper than we did. Without having human capital assets. And similarly, we would have a recession taking place in the 2016 to 2017 period. There's a degree, increased degree of volatility to the time series, and this is partly the conceptual reasons. Because at the moment, our estimate includes um evaluations and other volume changes. Which we want to strip out in future work. And it also includes a cohort effect, because we get hits each year as a body of 16-year-olds join the. Um. Become economically active and their human capital is started to be counted. And by uh the proposal of extending backwards uh to when they enter and building up human capital from the point of entry into education. This will hopefully smooth out the um time series, but that's for future work. And then the other compare point of comparison is the UK net worth per capita. So in 2018, we roughly have approximately um a a net worth per capita of £150,000. And by including human capital assets into the sequence of accounts. And by including human capital assets into the sequence of accounts, we would then jump to a net worth per capita of some £450,000 per capita. So therefore, each individual in the UK suddenly becomes richer. So conclusions to the presentation. So the one thing I wanted to walk away from this presentation with is that human capital assets are very large assets. Based on common estimates, human capital assets are approximately double the size of the total of all other non-financial assets. And within that category of other non-financial assets includes the asset of land. So these are very large assets, as you might expect. And therefore, inclusion of human capital assets has a large impact on other main economic aggregates. But this is not the end of the road. Future work is needed to capture the buildup of human capital from the start of the education process. We need to identify transactions, evaluations and other volume changes separately to improve and hopefully reduce volatility. And then we need to do some work to refine the boundary between what's a labor input and what's a human capital asset input. To to avoid any double counting without going to one extreme or the other. And there is the question over is there a need for an inclusion of an opportunity cost for work experience as an input? Along with other possible inputs such as certain characteristics or attributes of an individual which enhances their human capital. And that's all I wanted to say today. And so thank you. And if you'd like further information, you can contact me on the email address shown.
Excellent. Thank you, Rob. We're doing really well on keeping to time. So I'm going to press on to our final speaker, Josh Martin, presently at the Bank of England. Who's going to take us into a productivity lens.
And hopefully, Richard, you could confirm when that's on the screen.
It's on the screen.
Excellent. Good. Well, thanks. Thanks very much. And hello from sunny Cornwall here. So my name's Josh Martin. I'm at the Bank of England and very recently at the ONS. And this is work that I've been doing for the Economic Statistics Centre of Excellence, the ESCO, one of the organisers of this special session. And joint work with with John Franklin, who's the chief economist at Probono Economics. On measuring the the output and the productivity of the nonprofit sector. This is a proof of concept. It's work in progress, but it's very practical in nature and therefore fits nicely into into the into this session. Before I go any further, I should say that these views are our own and not necessarily those of the Bank of England, the ONS, the ESCO or Probono Economics. So why do we care about the productivity of the nonprofit sector? Well, the nonprofit sector is is a large and important bit of the economy. But it's generally poorly measured and often overlooked. Official statistics that the sort that we've been hearing about GDP, the national accounts, that sort of thing. Give relatively little insight to the sector. There is a sector of the accounts that some people might know by the name of NPISH, which stands for Nonprofit Institution Serving Households. Which you might think covers the sort of stuff that we're interested in, but that's dominated by universities which fall into that sector. And so other sorts of nonprofit businesses and charities and so on are sort of dwarfed in in that in that sector aggregate. And in fact, some sort of nonprofit businesses that you might be interested in often fall into the private corporation sector. If they earn enough of their income through 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 market activity and trading. And that's pretty much unidentifiable. So so it's really difficult to build a complete lens of of the nonprofit sector. And that's something that we're trying to tackle in this work. Coupled with that, as many people will know, the UK has had a what we call a productivity puzzle, a slowdown in productivity growth since the financial crisis. But we don't really know how the nonprofit sector plays into that, how productivity of that sector has performed over time, whether it's a a driver of the puzzle or bucks the trend. So we put these we put these motivations together and we're interested in improving measurement here and shedding some light on this issue. So before I dive into the sort of the practical elements and the data, and there will be a lot of those. I want to start off with just a little bit of theory and head back a little bit to sort of some econ 101 here. So take this this sort of stylized example of a profit maximizing firm who has has a marginal cost of production, who's faced with a downward sloping demand curve. And as per sort of standard economic theory would produce up to the point where marginal cost equals marginal revenue and therefore produce a quantity Q. And charge a price P on the demand curve. The costs that it faces, both fixed costs and variable costs, we can allocate out to the the standard sort of national accounts components. Some of them, some of which we've heard about in previous talks. So compensation employees, payments for labor, gross operating surplus, which is payments to capital. Which covers both the sort of direct costs of using capital, depreciation of that capital and also a return on capital. As sort of an opportunity cost of that investment. And also intermediate consumption, which is payments for for raw materials and other sorts of business services that are used up in the production process. And because this this business, this stylized business is a profit maximizing firm, they also earn some super normal profits. Some 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 profits and net operating surplus in the national accounts jargon and over above their cost curve. But charities are not profit maximizing or nonprofits are not profit maximizing, rather it's in the name. We can think about charities more as output maximizing firms. They try and produce as much as they can, given their income and that income generally comes from grants and donations and fundraising and that sort of thing. So rather than produce where marginal cost equals marginal revenue, they'll produce where marginal cost equals average revenue, i.e. as much as they can. And that would mean that they don't earn any super normal profit. But they still have to pay their compensation employees their normal gross operating surplus, including a sort of standard return on capital, sort of opportunity cost return on capital and pay for their intermediate inputs. So this is how we can think about a charity that 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 lower that that need not to earn any profit means that they can produce at a higher quantity, higher quantity and a lower price. But in fact, we can take this one or two steps further. So the marginal cost curve that the charity faces is not in fact at that level, but but even below that. Because we can think about workers in the nonprofit sector as accepting a wage penalty for working in that sector. There's quite a lot of evidence that the workers in the nonprofit sector get paid less than the the sort of market equivalent. And we can think about that because people in that sector are motivated by non pecuniary, not non-monetary issues. And so they they accept a lower wage and therefore the charity can produce at a lower cost because of that wage penalty and therefore produce a higher quantity. That means that if we want to value the output of the charity in a more conceptually appropriate way and more comparable with the market sector. We should add on the value of the of the labor input. That the the workers are implicitly sort of sacrificing to 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 make that output. So if if we wanted to make a true evaluation of the output in this sector, we would want to add that back on. We think we would conceptually also like to add on additional value associated with positive externalities. So you can think about the the people who demand outputs in the nonprofit sector. The people who are paying for it are the people who are donating to the sector. Who are not usually the same people who are consuming the output of the nonprofit sector. And there's no reason to think that the valuation of the donor and of the recipient would be the same. And there's plenty of evidence that there's a lot of positive externalities associated with the output of this sector. So we think that conceptually we would like to add on additional value to society associated with the output of this sector that isn't reflected in its cost or in or in the income of the charities. In practice, this is very difficult to do and we haven't attempted to do it in the work and the results that I'm going to present in a minute. But we just wanted to note it note that even even with the adjustments that I come on to talk about in a moment. We think we're still undervaluing the the output of this sector. So let's move from the theory into the practice. And if we wanted to construct some productivity estimates for this sector. And if we were if we were jumping just off the national accounts numbers, our productivity estimate would probably look something like this. It's quite typical for labor productivity estimates to have gross value added on the top. And some measure of labor input, usually hours worked on the bottom. And in the national accounts context, as currently measured, gross value added would be the sum of paid labor remuneration compensation of employees for for employees in the sector. And consumption of fixed capital, the use of the depreciation of the capital that's used and and the cost of that use. But not including any net operating surplus following international guidance. And then for our labor input, we would just have employee hours worked. What we're going to do is expand this measure in this framework to better account for all those sort of theoretical differences between the market sector and the and the and the nonprofit sector that I just described. So we're going to add on a number of factors onto both the top and the bottom here. So as well as the paid wages and salaries for employees, we're also going to add on that non pecuniary benefit. The the wage penalty that workers accept in this sector to bring it up to sort of market equivalent rates and value it as if they were paid in the market. We're going to add on a a low sort of normal rate of net operating surplus consistent with the opportunity cost of using the capital and therefore better reflect the true value of of the services used in production. This isn't a profit measure, it's just it's just an opportunity cost. We're also going to add the value of volunteer time because of course there's a lot of volunteering that goes on in the sector. And we want to be able to value that input as if it were a paid input. Of course, it's not paid, but 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 it contributes to output. And so the value of the output must reflect the cost of those inputs. And then on the bottom, we want to account for not just the paid labor input, the hours worked to the employees. But also the unpaid labor input, the hours worked with the volunteers. In in the paper, there's a lot of details about how we get all of this data and how we how we put it all together. I'll just skim through these now, but I'm happy to pick up more details in the Q and A if anyone's interested. So we're very grateful to the ONS for publishing some some breakdowns of of the data that we needed to do this. So we've got wages and salaries, the non-wage labor costs and the consumption of fixed capital of the NPISH sector. Bar, we've got the proportion of of gross value added by industry that's relevant to this sector. As well as the the totals for the sector as a whole from the national accounts tables. So we can construct these these three elements easily. For the value of volunteering, we draw on the ONS household satellite accounts, which was already mentioned in a previous presentation. And in that household satellite account is an estimate of the value of volunteering. Which is based on the participation rates in in volunteering, formal volunteering, which comes from the community life survey. And then that's multiplied by a sort of shadow wage from equivalent workers in the market market sector. To provide a valuation of that input. Those data run only from 2005 to 2014. So we make extensions across our entire time series using publicly available data, which matches up quite nicely with the published estimates. And we also, as well as accounting for shadow wage, we're also going to account for shadow non-wage labor costs. So put it on an equal footing with compensation employees in the national accounts with a with an uplift factor. For the volunteering input on the on the denominator of our equation. It's going to follow exactly the same process of using those household satellite account measures, but hours worked rather than the the evaluations. For the net operating surplus, we look at the relationship between gross operating surplus, which includes both the cost of capital and the return on capital. Across the different sectors of the economy using national accounts data. That is about sort of two and a half to three, that ratio in the in the private sector. So Thanks, Richard. So in the private sector, the the return on capital is some sort of one and a half to two times more than consumption of fixed capital. That reflects a profit rather than just the opportunity cost. So we use a lower ratio of 1.5. And and fit a a time profile that's consistent with the the return on capital across the rest of the economy. Which has been declining over time, which is a fairly well-known feature of of the macroeconomy. For the non pecuniary wages, we've got relatively limited evidence here, but but there is some evidence that the workers in the sector accept a sort of 20 to 30% wage wage penalty. So we make a fairly conservative 20% uplift, which is fixed over time, pending better better evidence on that. And for the employee hours worked, there are no breakdowns of labor input from the ONS of jobs or workers by institutional sector. So we make the simplifying assumption that there's constant productivity across sectors within an industry. And that allows us to use the breakdowns by industry that the ONS have published of gross value added. Apply that to the productivity measures to back out the labor input measures, which we can then add up to form an aggregate for the sector. So we're using only publicly publicly available data and we think in a in a conceptual improvement to to make a better estimate here. That's just a summary. So let's get into the results and these are annual data from 1997 to 2019. And starting with the current price gross value added estimate. So this is the numerator of our productivity equation, not yet accounting for inflation. Just to talk you through these charts, on the left-hand side, I've got the sector including universities and the education industry. On the right-hand side, I'm excluding universities in the education industry, given that they're a large chunk. And given that they're not typically what people are interested in when they're interested in nonprofits. And to help us see the the data on the right a little bit, let me just rescale that up to be a bit more similar. So the the bars below the dark line, so those are the sort of the pale bars and then the light blue bars. Those are the national accounts components of of labor input and capital input. Everything above the dark blue line is the additions that we've made. So the pink bars are the volunteering shadow wages and the purple bars above those are the volunteering shadow non-wage labor costs. The orange is the the normal return on the sort of opportunity cost of of capital. And then the dark blue bars at the very top are the non pecuniary sort of wage uplift, the wage penalty that workers accept. And then the gold line across the top is the summation of all of that. So a couple of things to to point out. In the in the sector excluding education, the bits that we've added are are quite significant. They sort of more than double the the original estimates from the national accounts. In the chart on the left, which includes universities, the uplift is not so much because universities are a very large, large chunk of that already. And and the growth rate is is similar or or even possibly slightly faster with the addition. With these additions, the NPISH sector now accounts for about 4% of GDP, up from about 2.5% before these adjustments. So this is, you know, this is this is quite quite significant. In 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 real terms, adjusting for inflation, the growth rates also increase. There's a range of lines on this chart, these charts, because the deflators here are quite uncertain. There's there's different deflators that you could you could get from various different places, but our our sort of central case are the dark blue lines on each chart. And the original unadjusted data are in the pink lines on each chart. That both of them see a see an increase in growth over 20 years, although depending on exactly how you do this, you you might get some different ones. For the labor inputs, let me again rescale the the right-hand chart. For the labor inputs, volunteering adds an awful lot of labor input, especially when we exclude the university. So look at the chart on the right, on the chart on the on the right, volunteering is sort of more more than the paid hours worked in fact. And if we put all of that together and make a productivity estimate, then and this is this is my final results chart. We put all that together and make some productivity estimates on the right-hand side. In fact, in both charts, the dark blue line is what we had before our adjustments. And the yellow gold sort of line is what we got after our adjustments. So by making these adjustments, if we focus on the right-hand side chart first, that's excluding universities. We get a very different story about productivity, rather than declining, it's actually been increasing. And in fact, increasing at a pace that's pretty consistent with the rest of the economy, at least up until the financial crisis. On the left-hand chart, which includes a big chunk of universities and education output, and there's measurement challenges here. The the change is not so significant in the first instance. But if we were to go ahead and add in the the quality adjustments to public sector output, which Kiana mentioned earlier on. Then we'd get a productivity trend that sort of roughly breaks even over the course of time. So these are very, very different results. So just to just to wrap up, we think these are a range of sort of practical steps using publicly available data. To better reflect conceptually the value of the sector and and the result is a big change to to our understanding of productivity in the sector. There are some big improvements that we want to make, particularly using microdata to allow us to to test some of those sort of fixed factors that we that we have applied in various places. And also a bit more scrutiny on the deflators which which make a big difference as they always do with productivity. And I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we now have Rukka Hertzstra, who's going to respond to those four talks. There's quite a range of things there, so I'll I'll let him get straight into this and then we will come on to the questions. I currently have three questions that I can see. So do please get your questions in whilst Rukka is giving us a review of the talks. Over to you, Rukka.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah, of course, quite a tough task. I think we've seen a lot of really great papers with a lot of depth and and detail. And I've had the privilege of reading a couple of them as well. So to to kind of connect the topics, I think it is also good for our audience to know something that I think was alluded to in one of the presentations, and that is that the SNA, the system of national council actually be changed in 2025. So actually, some of these things that you're seeing here Some of these things that you're seeing here might actually end up in a new system of national accounts. And now usually that process is quite conservative because of data constraints. So I think. A lot of these examples here are very advanced in terms of data. So from a global perspective, that might be slightly difficult. But there are other things that we, I think, should pay attention to, and that's the. Methodological advancement, how advanced are these presentations and and suggestions that we've had? And also, do they fundamentally change our ideas of what the economy is? Or are they very much focused on an incremental improvement of something that is really important? So. Just from that perspective, I had a look at the papers and and I'll try and. And, you know, add some points to the discussion on that basis. So first, the two papers that have more to do with the production side of the of the economy. So. The human capital paper, I think, is really excellent in combining the cost, kind of the investment. Stands on human capital measurement as well as the lifetime income approach. There is one aspect in the methodology that. I I was in the past very. That I really liked, which was the time investment that people actually spend in their education. So. That may might be something that would might be added, but overall a very methodologically advanced paper. On the interpretation side, I think, you know, we do know that this human capital in net worth is very dominant. That is something that I think we've known. For for quite some time. The the GVA developments are very striking, a recession in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. And I think there we do need to start thinking also of the interpretation, because that is a very fundamental shift. In the way that we view gross value added. So I think there actually the changes are so large and it also challenges. The story that we tell with that with that statistic. Then the the charity work that we just saw from from Josh. They're very striking as well, very interesting. To see and it was the paper that I saw wasn't entirely finished yet. I thought the volunteer value might need a little bit of a further explanation, or it wasn't fully clear to me. And if I move on to the interpretation side. There I did have the question, you know, does this fundamentally change the way we view? Our economy or is it an incremental change in in, you know, in the value that we have for for M Pish? I do think there's one area where it does fundamentally change, and that's the labour component by adding this volunteer part to labour. That truly is, I think, something that really is changing the way we view this. Then the two papers that are more on the consumption side. The spectrum of of welfare measures, I think, are very, very robust study as well. With precursors, of course, back to nineteen seventy two, measure of economic welfare. I think methodologically speaking, there has been a bit of a rift in that kind of methodology. Caused by the stimulus report that basically said at some stage. Try and measure current welfare and and future welfare separately through this inclusive wealth that you can measure the future. And that, I think, also leads to my interpretation. That I sometimes have a bit of trouble with with these type of studies, and that is climate change. If you looked at the empirical results. Are apparently is not a very important welfare component. And even if you were, so that's a very important future oriented impact. And yet it doesn't turn up to to be very important from from the perspective of of welfare. So. I do find that that narrative sometimes problematic, and I do think we need to do something with that. And I and I'll have a suggestion in a moment. And then the last. The last paper, the democratic income approach, I think, very. Very fascinating as well, very robust in terms of the data and estimation. But I think it was already alluded to by Andrew as well, that. It is quite striking that, just from an empirical perspective, it doesn't seem to add. As much as we would perhaps hope, given that this is quite a good methodological advancement. So. And I think that's it. It's also interesting to talk about the storylines and and the methodologies and the robustness of these. From the perspective of this S and A revision. One final point that I'd like to make, and that is that. I do sometimes feel that we, as economists, we're very used to welfare economics, supply and. Supply and demand figures and those kind of things. But it might be useful actually to to actually see that in economic accounting, we create a lot of physical data. And there might actually be other evaluation methods beyond economics that might help us interpret these things. So if I take the example of the carbon, for example. You can get a carbon figure from the environmental accounts. And then you can stick a social cost of carbon on it. And then you get, you know, in this spectrum approach, you get a value on that. But you can just as easily add a carbon. Use a carbon measure and link it to planetary boundaries, for example. And then suddenly the story does change dramatically in the sense that then carb, climate change does become a real big problem. Rather than it being, you know, very minor when you look at it from the spectrum approach. And I also think in terms of time use, it would actually be useful to have the time use separate. And then to actually have, you know, these welfare economic opportunity cost type methods. You know, though that is one interpretation of these things, but. As as was alluded to, there are many, I guess, wellbeing impacts, for example, in the volunteer service, in the volunteer. Domain that are also very important and could be leading to the time use there. So I do feel that we should sometimes be open to also different interdisciplinary approaches. Because they actually also change the story in some cases. Thanks, Richard. Those were my comments.
Excellent. So I I'll give the authors just a an opportunity to come back on some of those and play in some questions in just a second. I was, you know, probably for me also, you know, looking at the the human capital and the scale point. I think that is a really, really important one, that we've always known human capital. Human capital in many ways isn't in GDP because it is so dominating, because it is so large. Even relatively small fluctuations in a relatively large number can have disproportionate effects. And I'm not sure that many people would want to see GDP moving about vigorously. Because of a change in in this particular component. And that's why I think Cleena's points of seeing these things as a spectrum and be able to put together complementary numbers. To understand the movement in human capital without it fundamentally rewriting the story of production in the UK. Is a is a useful way to conceptualize this. I'm just going to run through the three questions that we have, and I'm going to give the authors an opportunity to come back. So I have two questions for Andrew. The first is from Hannah Tarrant at the L S E. And and she's effectively asking that when we we think about these experiences of a typical household. Is national income an appropriate income concept for doing this? Given that some of the components such as government consumption aren't necessarily felt directly by households. The second question on Andrew's paper is from Mary Alice Doyle, also at the L S E. And she picked up on the same point as Rukhah about. The fact that the differences overall from standard measures of income are relatively small. So she asked, what what do we feel we can learn? And the third question that we've received thus far is for Robert on human capital. And 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 the sort of more fundamental question from an anonymous questioner. Why is it important to measure this separately? If you only care about it as an input to economic activity, can't we just see the output produced by human capital and GDP? If instead we care about human capital for its impact on wellbeing. Then is a way, is that the reason for measuring it separately? So I'll probably turn to Andrew first, then Cleena for any thoughts on on Rukhah's questions and then on through the team. So Andrew first.
Thanks, Richard. Thanks for the questions. So I think the question about, yeah, is it the appropriate? Measure of. Income. I mean, I think that's a very valid question. And the answer, short answer is possibly not. But of course, the part of the point of doing this is is really. For the reasons that Cleona explained much more clearly than I did, you know, that you have national accounts data. Produced consistently over time and across many countries. And so that's one of the advantages that makes it. Sort of simple to use. But you could certainly question whether that's the most appropriate measure of income. Definitely. And the other question about differences, yes, I mean, there don't seem to be. Particularly large differences at the moment between our democratic national income measure and the plutocratic measure. Although we did find, as I alluded, showed more differences when we're just looking at household income. And that, by the way, was from H B A, H B A I data, not E T B. I misspoke before. But that's something we're still looking into. There also, I think, but I think where there are some differences is in the Gini coefficients and the other measures of distribution. I mean, I could have showed you, I probably should have showed you a graph. You know, where we compare that to some O N S data, which is which is just based on household income. So we need to do a bit more comparison of some of the other measures. The ninety ten, for example, the top ten percent income share, we can do a bit more to compare those to. Measures based on just household income. There was something else I was going to say, but I've forgotten. And I think I think, you know, I think in terms of the democratic plutocratic, I think it's. Relatively easy to make a strong case for, you know, if you're going to have a measure of. Income growth, it makes sense to use the democratic measure. I mean, why not? But yes, at the moment, at least for the UK, at least for this relatively short time period. Differences don't seem that large, but that could change. And maybe the differences would be different. Maybe you would see more differences over a longer time horizon and perhaps for different countries.
Excellent. Thank you. Cleena, do you want to say something quickly about climate change?
No, definitely. And I think it's. Absolutely spot on question of one of the most important issues that any measure of economic welfare really needs to aid. Public and user understanding of at the moment. The the point raised in particular around the the small nature of it. For time reasons, I had to skip over a little bit, but I I gave a presentation to the I M F that focused very much just on this particular point of the spectrum framework. And there are two particular points I'd like to mention on it. So the the first one is that. It absolutely highlights the need for international work across lots of different countries on this, because climate change does not just affect the UK. And the model accounts for this. It's a it's a degradation that UK causes, but to the global climate. And therefore, any data that feeds into this on the damage that needs to come at a global level. And that's what we pull from at the moment. We pull from an O E C D report that matches very closely with last year's I P C C. Report into the sorts of damage, but these models at the moment really. Focus very much on incremental damage caused by climate change. It doesn't have some of the fundamental level shifts. And crises that could be caused, the the big discontinuities. And that's where I feel there's a lot of. Work that can be done by all sorts of economists working together to value those, to bring them together into a framework. At the moment, what we do is we put together a way of systematizing them within an accounting framework, which is my sort of second point on this is that. Within our article. Because we're aware of these caveats of the data that we have at the moment, I mean, that the numbers are incredibly small. What we try to do is highlight the the trends over time, because even with this. Even with these. Imperfections in the data at the moment, we do get, for example, this interesting trend that because, as we include that, the. The the negative effect that comes from an emission of carbon comes from the marginal effect of that carbon. Not just in the year that it's released, but in all subsequent years in which it remains in the atmosphere. That's all accounted for in the year that it's emitted. What that ends up producing in the data is that even though the UK has substantially reduced its carbon emissions over the past ten years. Actually, the negative impacts of that carbon has increased slightly over time. Because that offsetting effect of the higher marginal cost outweighs the the volume from them. So. Even with some of these preliminary first bits of work that we can do, we can pull out some interesting trends from these these toy models, if you will. So.
So sorry, Cleena, I'm going to have to bring you to a stop there, just to give others a chance to come in. So Rob, do you have any final thoughts on your paper?
Yeah, and in response to the question, at the moment. Human capital is a missing capital. And as you can see from the work. That if you start expanding the asset and production boundary, you do get a G V A and therefore GDP impact. So it is important to capture it. And then from that point on, you can talk about distribution effects and wellbeing effects once it's there. I should have mentioned in my presentation that these are my opinion as an author and not necessarily the views of the O N S. And, yeah, and hopefully this paper is a starting point of the journey of a discussance with everybody in. On how we can improve and develop these human capital estimates.
Thank you, Rob. And Josh?
Yeah, thanks. So Rukhah picked up on 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 one point around volunteering that I just wanted to come back on very, very briefly. So. The valuation of volunteering time, I think, conceptually is 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 quite strong. These are. Inputs into the production process. And although they're not paid, they still contribute to 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 output and the value of that output. Just as we'd like to capture home production, although that's not paid, that still has some value and and likewise, so does so does volunteering. In terms of the actual sort of data and the methods. There's there's some data collected in various surveys over time on how much people participate in volunteering. And that's restricted to formal volunteering and regular volunteering, so as to improve the data quality. And then similar activities in the market sector are identified and and wages in the market sector used as a sort of shadow wage. To apply to that volunteering time, so as you make it a market equivalent. And that's essentially what we've used here. So those are those are quite quite well recognized sort of methods and and frameworks for that. And we're just drawing on 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 lots of excellent work that's been done by the folks at the O N S and internationally in the past.
Thank you all. Well, I'm going to wrap us up because we're we're closing in on our our end time very quickly. I want to say a huge thank you to all the speakers and their co authors. Thanks to Siraj, who's been operating in the background and making sure this session runs nice and effectively. Obviously, a lot of the work here is is highly experimental and we'd really love to hear back from people. With any thoughts or ideas they may have. We're always looking to improve our data and to strengthen it. And we hope you'll keep an eye out at the O N S and the Economic Statistics Centre of Excellence. For future forthcoming work on all these topics. Thank you very much. I hope you have a very pleasant rest of your conference. Good evening.